Alright, here we go. So again, thank you everyone for bearing with us. In case you just joined, I just want to remind you that you can chat with others using the chat box and that if you want to ask a question for the panelists later on, please use the Q&amp;A tab and we will do the best we can to get to all your questions. You can also find us at UCANDMADISON.org. If you have questions, you can find Urban Community Arts Network on Facebook as well if you want to send questions or comments that you don't want to leave publicly here. I'd like to thank our sponsors today. There are several people that contributed to making this event happen. One of the most important parts is that this is a music-related meeting, so of course we're going to show performances to you. Thanks to Dane Arts and City of Madison Arts Program, we were able to pay our performers today, which is something that we think is very important and part of our conversation is valuing music professionals in our city and showing that value by paying for their time. I also want to thank the team that helped plan this event, David Boyd of So Sonic and Tune Up, Walter Jankowski of Better Dash Faster Consulting, and Carol Schaefer as well as our panelists. And first, I'd like to introduce Anhela Fertes. She is a city planner for the City of Madison and also a singer-songwriter originally from Colombia. Her main music influence is Latin rock and Colombian folklore. Anhela grew up in Ibagay Tolima and moved to Bogota to obtain a bachelor's degree in architecture. After living in Australia for almost two years, she came to Madison in 2013 to do a master's degree in urban and regional planning at UW-Madison. After working as an intern for the Planning Division in 2016, Anhela earned a full-time position with Neighborhood Planning, Preservation, and Design Section. And she's been recently working on music-related projects funded by the city and will continue to work with our team to help implement the recommendations outlined in the Task Force on Equity in Music and Entertainment Report. Next, we also have Rob Franklin, also known excellently as Rob B's in the Madison area. He is the Media Projects Bublerarian for the Madison Public Library. Yes, that is a dog title, which is pretty cool. He is a Kennedy Center Certified Teaching Artist for the Making Justice Program and his primary focus is on creating workshops on hip-hop, spoken word, and personal branding as positive forms of self-expression. As a teaching artist, Rob has held residencies with Madison Youth in a variety of settings such as several schools, community centers, and the Dane County Juvenile Detention Center. In 2016, he was named Madison Public Library's Community Recipient of the Medal of Honor for Museum and Library Services. As a musician, he's performed with the likes of Nas, Eminem, Common, Tali Qualley, Bed Prez, and many more, and has been named a Madison Favorite for Best in Hip-Hop by It's This Magazine for multiple years and also Best in Madison by Madison Magazine. Rob has fought for equity in our music scene and just in our city in general for years, and this includes his role as Vice Chair on the Task Force on Equity in Music and Entertainment. Rob has also continued this work by helping to make today's event possible. So, the purpose of today's meeting is to bring the music community from the greater Madison area, supporters and businesses into this conversation about equity in our music and entertainment scene. Because we can't do this without you. We need all hands on deck if we really want to see an equitable scene. We see this event only as a first step and an invitation into a larger discussion so that we can do some planning for sustainable action that builds on work that has been done by the Urban Community Arts Network and the hip-hop community in general over the past decade and more. We'll begin today, excuse me, we'll begin today with a discussion between Rob, Anhela, and me to give you some background and context for the work that has been done so far, as well as a summary of what we'd like to do to move forward. And then we'll take some questions and end today with a discussion of next steps. We will be hearing performances from Super Friends, Lomary, and Josh Cohen, so definitely look forward to that. So to start, I would like to pass it over to Rob to give us some background about the Task Force and we were talking about equity and why hip-hop and whatever else you might want to say.
Cool, thank you Karen. So, pretty much the work of the Task Force, for the people that don't know, this is, I would say, probably about seven to 10 years in the making. And the reason why, at least for me, why I feel like this work is so important is because music is a microcosm of Madison in general. And for me, you know, looking at the music scene and to see that voices are not being heard, in particular voices of color, not having the same access to stages, not having the same access to venues, just in general. So I feel like, I feel like the work of the Task Force was to come up with some recommendations to take to the city to really, to really call to action for this to become a truly more progressive place. And that takes that. The Task Force, you know, like I said, we really made an effort to make sure that there are things like making sure artists of color were included in festivals. You know, making sure that we talked about things like media sensationalism and how the genre of hip-hop in particular sometimes kind of doesn't necessarily get the best rep. So, pretty much, pretty much the Task Force came up with recommendations that we have felt would be helpful to really make an infrastructure for our music system and for independent musicians and artists. So, yeah, that's kind of where I think we're at. Like I said, there's, if you'd like to look up the Task Force report, you can see all the 31 recommendations that were made. Like we said, everything from festivals to anti-bias training, like, you know, talking about interaction. So, I hope I got a good basis for that to start and we'll pass it back.
Yeah, and you can find that Task Force report in full. Oh, Anhela just posted the link in the chat.
Well, it's in the legislature of the city, so I'm just, yeah.
It looks like I just went to the panelists, but I am also putting in a link to the UCAN website where you can also find the link to the Task Force report. And I'm going to copy Anhela, your link and just make sure it gets out to all the people who are watching today.
Perfect. Well, I'm very happy to be here, new to this team. So as Karen mentioned in the introduction, I have two careers, city planning and music. So this is a perfect combination for me. So, based on the recommendations from the Task Force on Equity in Music and Entertainment Report, it was more than clear for us, Planning Division, that Karen Wolf, the city arts administrator, wouldn't be able to do everything by herself. She has too many things on her plate. So if we are really committed to equity in the music industry, we needed someone to help her even though we have current financial constraints and today more than ever due to COVID. But one of the most important recommendations from the Task Force report was to have a music officer that we hope ideally we can have that person full-time working on different tasks and potentially having also legislative body, music board, or something that really represents the music community in Madison. So, I'm also part of the racial equity and social justice for the department. And that's also something that I'm advocating every day, how we can be a more welcoming community. I've had experienced some of the issues that we have in Madison. It's hard for a musician to make a living as a musician in Madison full-time. Oftentimes, people have to juggle two jobs and there is not an advocate for these musicians. So cities like Nashville, Austin, Melbourne, Toronto have a music officer that is fully committed to be a liaison between the music community and how we regulate, how we do policies, how we convince policymakers to invest in music. And that's something that, even though I won't be able to do it full-time, because city planning is my main role, I'm committed to spend some portion of my time working on this group, Madison Music City. I've been also working for Make Music Madison since last year, trying to get the work out, especially within the community of color. We hope that someday we have a more, a stronger industry that really supports people of color and musicians that we can make a decent amount of money and we don't have to go anywhere else. But this Madison, that Madison can help us reach other cities and not the opposite, which oftentimes, that's what happens. And yeah, I'm really committing and that's why I'm being part of this group. And I'm super happy to be able to combine my two, my two careers.
Yeah, that's awesome, thank you. I want to also echo what Rob and Anhela said and just really emphasize that the reason this work got started is because we had some very specific access issues to stages and that is hip-hop artists, to this day, still have trouble getting equitable access to stages and other opportunities in the greater Madison area. And this is specifically artists who identify as black. We also see a disproportionate police presence in general and also a disproportionate response from certain venues and individuals about crowds that come out to live music events that are composed of mostly people who identify as black. So this work definitely started out to make sure that we're focusing on black artists, on hip-hop artists, and making sure that they have access to stages, just like anyone else. And of course, we want to focus on anyone who doesn't have equal access to stages. And by building in this music infrastructure, having this conversation, we believe that we can make some real differences here by implementing the Task Force recommendations. But we do need to make sure that this is always focused on equity first and that we don't lose sight of the original issue. So many times in the Madison area and in many places, we start out projects like this with a diverse group at the table. We identify the problem, we identify ideas, but then as the project moves forward with more resources, funding, and people, we tend to lose that voice of people of color who originally brought the issue to the table and originally brought solutions and strategies to the table. So we are moving very intentionally and we are moving slowly in this process to make sure that our original intent stays the focus, stays as the focus here. I'm going to just show you some, some points about what we're working on here. So beyond the Task Force report, we also want to look at the larger music scene in Madison. And so when we talk about music and entertainment, sometimes it can be a little bit trivialized. So, you know, we think of it as something fun, something extra, and we don't always understand the full impact that a limited entertainment scene can have. So, we want to introduce you to this idea of the music ecosystem. So in the center here is what we're talking about. We have our, I'll make this a little bit bigger here for you. We have our live music, we have our recorded music. We have everybody involved in that, artists, performers, people who are supporting that scene, so producers, promoters, and all those other different kinds of roles. But just adjacent to that, the music system also has a big impact on our education system. So we have music programs at schools, which we know over the years have been consistently cut in funding. But we know they're so important for kids to develop in their, their social, emotional learning and their general education. And we also have professional development training and music business trainings. There's a lot going on there. We have community engagement. So in almost every forum that we see, we see art, we see music in leadership, we see music in public spaces and community centers. A big response to the, with the protesting that's been happening, the first thing you see are images, the first thing you hear are songs and music that have been written to describe what we're currently seeing and help to sort of put that into context and also convey the emotion that people are feeling. So we can't have, you know, we never have community engagement usually without some kind of music. This also goes to the media. People who are writing PR, broadcasting are affected by this. And we zoom out even farther and look at our sporting events. Music is always played there. Music is built into technology, programming, transportation. And of course, our entire nightlife scene, all of the bars that we have in Madison, and coming out of this COVID epidemic, music is going to be a big part of bringing life back into our nightclubs in Madison. And on the flip side, you know, we talk about health and wellbeing. Music feeds our souls, music helps us de-stress, helps us process our emotions. It also helps with tourism. People want to come to a city where they can, they can go to their, do their business by day and party by night or just sit back and enjoy some good music. Hospitality industry or hotels here, when we have great music festivals, people come from afar to visit here. So music and entertainment in and of itself really impacts a broad variety of industries and systems that we need to make sure we're focusing on. And so for this plan, there's a few points just to talk about. We want to look at equity. This is a progression, again, from the Task Force on Equity in Music and Entertainment. We've looked at underinvestment in communities of color across the city. This is a big economic impact. So for this project, we, to really make this work, we need to do a comprehensive inventory and look at the economic impact of the value of music as a whole in the Madison area. I mean, we're not just talking about businesses who are thriving here. We're also talking about hundreds, hundreds, maybe, you know, thousands of entrepreneurs in Madison who are affected by the health of our music economy. This is going to require partnership. So far, we've had a very unique partnership between a number of organizations that are looking at all these areas. We have people who have expertise in music. We have people who have expertise in the business industry. And we need all of those voices to come to the table if we really want to see lasting change. We don't want this to be another one of those conversations or studies that just gets written up and sits on a shelf. We have a bad habit of doing that in Madison. And this is an effort to take a public and private strategy approach to this to make sure that we can actually get to implementation. And so part of this plan is to look at an intentional strategy and how do we come up with, even over the next two years, over the next five years, with a set of actions that can help this impact Madison long-term? And of course, all of these things that we work out for the music and entertainment scene have the potential to benefit many other areas in terms of equity. So the plan here and what we're really looking to do, first of all, is align stakeholders. So we've been meeting in the hip-hop community for many, many years and we've also recently been meeting with the city and with Dane Arts. And let me say that there have been a lot of supporters in this work over the years, but we just haven't quite been able to get over the hump. We've had lots of conversations with groups like, recently groups like Downtown Madison, the Central Business Improvement District has worked to hip-hop on State Street, Overture Center, Monona Terrace, venues like the Majestic, like the Rest in Peace Frequency. Art in many small venues are concerned about this issue and want to work on it. But we also need to pull together artists in the broader music community, promoters, other venues, educators in music, production companies, music production companies, and just the fans and the audiences. We need to hear from you and we need you engaged in this. The next step is to strategize for equity. So we're really looking for, the Task Force did a lot of this work identifying what the barriers are, what the root causes are for this issue. The Task Force, pretty quickly, this very diverse 11-numbered Task Force, pretty quickly aligned that the root cause of our issue here is racism. And the issues that we know already broadly exist in Madison and Dane County with our racial disparities. So we want to continue to identify those barriers, but not only identify them, but remove policy and regulatory barriers that keep black and brown artists from having equal access to stages. We then want to develop a system for regional promotion. So how, and talking about this music infrastructure and how can we grow our music scene so it benefits everyone? We've been talking about this as a city for many years as well so that entrepreneurs, musicians who are entrepreneurs can make a living. And then finally, again, the five-year plan. We're going to make sure we get this thing done. And this is important for a lot of obvious reasons. This will be posted later so you can read, but we gotta focus, we have to have a concerted effort to focus on these policy issues. We all know that it takes a really long time and a lot of hands and voices to change policies, to change legislation if necessary, to make sure that we're seeing equity in our city. And the City of Madison Racial Justice and Racial Equity and Social Justice Initiative is a big one, but we've got to make sure that that's centered and able and staffed appropriately and resourced appropriately along with the Department of Civil Rights to make sure that they can do what they need to do to have equal access. Again, impacts tourism very, very strongly and also retaining young professionals of color. So if we don't have anywhere for people to socialize, that's just one factor in making sure that people want to come to Madison and they want to stay here and put down roots. And over the last couple of years, we've lost in the double digits, young professionals, young black professionals who just couldn't find their place here. They didn't feel like they belonged. They didn't feel like they were welcomed and they moved to cities like Atlanta, like Chicago, like other places in the country where they can build a life and their career at the same time. Again, determining the economic impact of Madison, letting everyone know that, and then using the power of music to grow this thing and to take it further. So I'm going to tell you how this is done and then we're going to go into our first performance and that's going to give you all the time to think about some questions. So the way we get this done is, Urban Community Arts Network is going to continue leading this project as we have over the years with very big support and investment from the hip-hop community. And we also want to work with a company called Sound Diplomacy. Now, Sound Diplomacy is a local, I'm sorry, global expert in building these music economies and building these music cities. They've worked in a number, like 25 different countries and many cities also in the US. One of the studies they did was in Vancouver and that project was associated with Sandra Gachik who was running the Overture Center before she passed away way too soon, late last fall. But we do have these local connections. And what Sound Diplomacy can help us do is to get into some of the regulatory and policy issues as well as give us some advice about how to put together some of the things we find out from stakeholders to put this into an actual plan. And we estimate that this whole project over the next two to three years is going to cost us about $300,000. The amount that would go to Sound Diplomacy is in negotiations so far, but we're looking at probably around $60,000 to $70,000 and the rest will be invested back into the community through UCAN to staff the project to happen locally. So, think of questions that you want to ask us. Put it in the Q&amp;A section. And I am going to bring on our first performers, the Super Friends. Let me tell you just a little bit about them.
You're muted, Rob.
Okay, so Super Friends. The Madison, Wisconsin-born hip-hop group known for their boisterous stage presence hail from hip-hop literacy courses in high school band rooms. With multiple influences all over the board, the sound they begin to carry is raw, introspective, and vivid. Often referred to as the local boot tang. If you don't know who that is, Google it right now. Known as the local boot tang, the group brings a young energy, a young energetic 90s feel to what is now modern rap. From an old head, from an old head's breath of fresh air to a smile on a reporter's face, all the way to head nods and call back from the younger generation, Super Friends covers an indescribable amount of ground, literally and figuratively. Six members of the group are here to perform tracks off of Super, no Supa, which is their latest and first studio project released. So, Super Friends, the stage is yours.
Awesome, awesome. Supa, you know, that whole thing. So as Karen was saying, Super No Supa is our project that we just dropped this last Saturday, AKA the first day of summer. Make sure you check that out on SoundCloud, YouTube, and Loom. And you can visit www.thesuperfriends.com to get more information about that. Anyways, we're about to kick some things off.
Yo, magic monkeys in hoodies colored to match my mubest and I'm a cool decimal point included numbers out of orbit. I don't care if I hit target 3% of tiger skeleton. My main objective is to raise any who want me gone. Terror ripping time, it's time to warp around the prophecy. A doctrine ain't the loss to run behind this one philosophy. That Tyrell is the antidote to phosphorescent simile. Tyrell is the one to save a family from famine.
On a different wave, bird code from the digger save. Metamorphic riot light, I'm mic'd with gamma ray. Is my pen sway as like it's doing?
His leg is doing the walk. You brand new and your sentence default, I'm data mining the vault. You, I'm in a UFO, you preset the soul song, I see you song when I do a show. Soaring from the grammer dope, manic flow, poor Demi got lead in our soda. We some crazy Martian smokers, the ayahuasca ayatollah, the non-canonical cadet, you bet. The self-proclaimed robotic romantic rapping bionic close, spit RPGs from my tongue. To know the youth, we still young, still one with you, brother, still one with another. Another one bites the hand that feeds the single mother. All demonized innocent locked-up fathers, lyrical problem solver, my platinum gold revolver. Boo! Uh, yo, Rob, how about you, bro? What's good? Yo, excitement on the nightstand, it's gotta get me up. Fire's gotta be started, gotta set me up, no liquor anymore. But I still wake up with a headache and the medic that I'm taking doesn't help it when I'm craving two. Write bars like AZ's first album, something that hard, like a cowboy's first magnum ranc second. Take the water in the villages exchanging raps for dime sacks and mad diligence. Way, cuz one don't go with the other, a lazy stoner undercover. I'm writing stuff to put up in museums in the Bronx, so hit you like some loud Buddha real hard, uh. This coffee addict knows the interest and focus, has to pay attention to the temple mental sources. Swear, it's only one cup and they start drawing up an image. And as soon as it's developed, they can only think about who's in it. Five members, nine blood connects and plenty educators. I've been counting get a split of my percent out, I... Help me grow some pork and try to write some rhymes, do what I can do, the paper pad for them, aight? Coffee icing up to keep me on the page, I like describes the perfect scene. The boy was dreaming back in childhood, questioning how the fam doing? They all said, "I'm good," that feeling understood, man, that feeling in my hook. I do this for the bliss, how about you? I rap reckless, but you check on, how about you? I do this, hiphop, how about you? I do this for the legend, y'all, how about you? Hip-hop for my soul, how about you? I do this for the love, how about you? We do this for the love, how about you? Form of express change, considering these rhymes are confession. Exercising the yokai with every writing session. Want to travel, maybe get this gravel out my pockets in quicksand, staring at Oasis. Eyes popping out my sockets, I can't hide on the page. I try to hide on stage, super boost steam, venting the pin stays enraged, right? It's the only time I let the beast out his cage, he likes to be blazing a haze. Leaving bystanders amazed, suit in the new list and make them eyebrows raised. Hieroglyphic hologram, son of the root phosphorus, became the hip-hop in the land of the hippocrisists. Anonymous, I was home made before anonymous, Ralph Franklin consciousness toppled the top economist. Why I'm up, but you let me down? You make it up for the Grammys, a couple of clowns. I fought for opportunity, a couple of rounds. I'mma buy my mama house off a couple of sounds, I'm around. All this art is only why I'm here, Vincent Van Gogh with the ear. Oppose upon my music, I promise I take it personal. I do it for my kids and my pops, it's irreversible. How about you? I'm out your records, but you check on, how about you? How about you? How about you? Hip-hop for my soul, how about you? How about you? How about you? We do this for the love, how about you? People ask, "Mugu champ, why they call you the chef? Is it the food?" Nah, baby, it's a rack in my check. I'm up late, why you sleeping, deep Z's on your breath? I'm whipping pasta, just to rub on my tight in the neck. Most death, counted the depths with my brothers and we came out. Ain't no way that you can put our flame out, we gonna bang out. Windows leaning, hanging flag out, super mo sole, hear the crowds when they screaming shout their name out. Rather than this a rapper you capping phones, sit in the wax with your tears, I'm stacking cheese off your walls. More gross than old hoes, got your boy running off ten toes down. People are shaking from the speakers banging loud, how about you? Say, "How about you?" We do this for the love, how about you? How about you?
Hey, shouts out Rob D, shouts out Karen, you better listen to them. Thank you all very much, that was Super Friends. There were three tracks off of Super No Supa, which yet again can be found on www.thesuperfriends.com, aka look for our SoundCloud, our YouTube, and our Loom account as well, and you can find us there.
Uh-huh, thank you, guys.
The attitude was the best, I love it.
Yes.
I love it.
Thank you very much.
See you later, Supa. So, um, I mean, that's our hip-hop scene right there. So if you weren't sure, that's it. Okay, so we have a few questions here, and everyone feel free to keep entering those questions, and we will take a couple for now, and then move on. So, first of all, could you describe what, if any, recommendations of the task force have been implemented, or what progress has been made, or what obstacles has been? Rob, do you want to start with that?
Uh, okay, I think where we were at was that the city council had pretty much taken these action items into consideration. I don't know how to properly describe it, it's kind of been at that stage. I just want to be clear, are they asking for specific recommendations that are in the plan? Or just where it's at? I just want to make sure.
I think the question's asking more where it's at, and I can just clarify, the report was accepted by the common council in February of 2019. And there's a difference between accept and adopt when it comes to reports. Accept means the council is acknowledging that the task force did what they were supposed to and did a report, whereas adopt means that the council would actually have some responsibility to implement the recommendations. Unfortunately, we were not resourced to do a full fiscal analysis, which most of the committees requested, and so that's what led to that accept option. But during the council meeting, Marsha Rommel, Alder Marsha Rommel was able to get an amendment to request that the executive council, the executive team of the common council, follow up with us and work with us. And we did have several meetings, but we haven't gotten very far. Now, that said, Angel, do you want to talk a little bit more about just sort of your experience? Because one of the recommendations, our very first recommendation was a request for $60,000 for a full-time position, who could serve as a liaison between the city and individuals? And the idea for this is not just in general in the music scene, but also someone who could go into communities and work with people directly, so...
Yeah, yeah, that was actually the first recommendation, and it was focused entirely on equity in the arts. So even though we haven't done that item, 100%, as I said in my introduction, planning division allocated some city staff, myself, to work on this music officer role. A hundred percent focusing on equity and social justice. So there are some financial constraints, but ideally we have that full-time employee. It was suggested in the report that that person would be in the mayor's office. We still don't know that part, but I'll be the first person to advocate for that full-time employee. And I think that one other step to move forward in equity in music is the creation of this group and the members, the new members of this group. So it's a new group, I've been pretty new, probably three months ago I joined. But the fact that we are launching it publicly, that we're moving forward, that we are committing to the public to really undertake implementation of these recommendations, I think that that's a big step. As Karen mentioned, we are moving slowly, but I think it's definitely something that we can look forward to.
Yeah, thanks. And if I could just point out, we actually don't have a cultural affairs office in Madison. We don't have an arts department in Madison.
No.
We have one and now 1.2 full-time equivalents of people who are working on art. Karin Wolf, our arts administrator, who has been around for many years and works really hard to get arts out there. No one told me to say this, I'm saying this all on my own, but a city like Madison that wants to have a cultural identity with arts as a focus, we need to figure out a way to build out that department so that we have a staff that can manage these issues. And that would help us get a lot farther. But for now, instead of just focusing on public sources, we want to focus both on public and private. And I also want to mention, we're not just focusing on Madison alone. We want to focus regionally, and we also, looking at the greater Madison area, of course, are looking into Dane County, and we have had so much support from Mark Frere at Dane Arts, again, helping to pay our performers today, and just in general, giving advice and, you know, just helping us to figure out how to move this forward, helping with connections as well. So I can't state enough the support that we have had from government. Also, Alder Arvina Martin was on the task force, very supportive. And yeah, I'll leave it at that, but that kind of moves... Did you want to say anything else about that, Rob?
Uh, yeah, just a big shout out to the people that participated. We've had everything, can't forget about Darwin from Formula of the Frequency, Matt from the Majestic, protege Jalen McCullough, different people that have definitely helped out in shaping this and making sure that all the voices are heard in this whole thing, so...
And of course Martha White, who was our staff person from the Department of Civil Rights, which was operating with, you know, not a fully resourced staff role for this task force. So we were able to accomplish quite a bit in a year than what we had to work with. Another one of the big recommendations that we haven't moved on yet, and I'm hoping we can, is looking at anti-bias training, working with ALRC. What kind of requirements can we put in place or strong suggestions so that venues have some kind of equity requirement in anti-bias training? So that when venues who are mostly full of white patrons and white bartenders have staff or have a crowd that is mostly white as well, and then when they have an event where the people don't look like that, there can be some very simple miscommunications that make things just not be a very fun night. So we're working on that as a focus as well. And the third thing that we're focusing on out of the 31 is how do we really get this diversity in our publicly-funded music festivals? And as you know, we have a lot of publicly-funded music festivals in Madison alone, but across Dane County. And thanks, someone who commented, absolutely, Mark at Dane Arts is, of course, very understaffed. As we know, arts are just generally unappreciated. But to take it beyond government, we also had a question about if someone was a business owner, not a venue owner, just someone in Madison who wants to support this, but they own a business, how can they support this project?
Invest. I mean, basically, I mean, like, yeah, if you're not a venue owner, but you want to support the cause, I mean, like I said, I think the very premise of this whole you dig is to be, to achieve that equity. I think it's going to take financial support to do that as well. And it's not just us, you know, just saying, "Please, please, please give us money." But it's like, let's be able to take this and invest in this and really, and really, and really get to this progressive Madison that Madison has a way of saying that it is, but isn't really. So I would just say the main thing is time, invest finance, and, you know, invest resources so we can reach out to other people and continue to spread the message.
Yeah, and also, don't be afraid to have musicians with different music genres, with music, a different language, different outfits, you know? Explore different music styles, because sometimes you just see rock or, yeah, the same styles, which is great, but a combination of music genres, I think, is also amazing to see, to see the diversity in the audience. And that's, I think that that's one of the reasons why Dane Dances is so diverse compared to the other festivals, because you see people dancing, and the crowd is mostly people of color, which is something that you don't really see in other festivals. There are also so much pressure for the musicians to sometimes fit in, depending on the venue, to fit their music or to fit, bring crowd or to advertise and invest on equipment, because the venue doesn't have the sound equipment for you to perform. So you have to pay equipment, you have to pay more musicians. There is a lot of investments that musicians have to take on, and I think that that should be taken by the business oftentimes. So those are things to think about.
Absolutely. And in addition, if you're a business owner, you're probably connected with other business owners, and how can you get them in on this conversation? We are more than happy to have conversations with colleagues who are wondering what this is about and look specifically at their situation to figure out what is the best way for them to get involved in this. And remember, even if you're not a music venue, you probably have a holiday, you might have a holiday party or something like that where you are having musicians come in, or maybe you have advertisements that you want music to go behind. And so be thinking about how you can diversify. One argument that we often hear is that, "Well, the people that come here only like this type of music." Well, if you play different music, you might get different people coming there. So, you know, you got to take those chances. If you want to have equity as a city, people have to take chances. Especially white people with privilege have to take chances if you really want to see racial justice happen here. It's, there's no way around it.
Super Friends is available for all birthdays and birthdays.
Yeah.
We want to see more groups like that. I just can't wait to see more people, more musicians playing like that.
Exactly. And then we also are going to need you to speak into this process. We need your perspective as we're designing these systems and plans to make this happen. We need a business owner's perspective so that we can build in things that actually work. We, one thing that, when we do this kind of thing historically in the city is that we have people designing solutions without people who are affected at the table. Normally, that's people of color in other marginalized communities, not at the table. What happens? Those solutions don't really work that well. And the same is going to go in this situation. Without business owners at the table, our solutions aren't going to work. So we need all the voices at the table. So because we started, I'm a little late, I'm going to move us on here, and I'm going to bring on our next performer, Lo Marie. And let me tell you just a little bit about Lo Marie. She is a Madison-based neo-soul jazz artist. She writes and performs songs that encompass jazz harmonic constructs, urban grooves, and soulful guitar passages and expressive vocals. She's a confident artist with a focused vision and a four-time Madison area music award winner. Go to her website or Spotify to stream her music, Lo Marie, L-O-M-A-R-I-E music dot com for more information, and we'll put that in the chat for you as well. Lo Marie, thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. What a great discussion. All right, well, I'm really happy to be a part of this panel. And I know Angel brought me on board because I did some singing with Orquesta Salsa Soul, which is a salsa-soul fusion group in town. And I promised to play a song in Spanish. Yeah, so this is a really famous song by Hector LaBeau called "El Cantante." Bravo! Thank you so much. Yeah, speaking of Dane Dances, that was always one of my favorite songs to play at Dane Dances, which is just a great, great spot, great festival. So thank you for mentioning that. All right. So next up, I want to play one of my original pieces off of my last record called Le Rev, which in French means "The Dream." And it's about, I thought it was really fitting for this too, because it's about freedom of creativity and expression. And, you know, I, I hope that everybody can have those same dreams. So this is, this is Le Rev.
Let's go, Lo Marie!
Yeah, Robby. All right, well, uh, the last song I want to leave you with is, um, is actually another cover song, one of my favorite songs in the whole world, by Donny Hathaway and Edward Howard, called Someday Will I Be Free.
Thank you so much. That was lovely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, thank you. Lo Marie, can you tell people where they can find your music?
Absolutely. You can find me on any streaming platform you like, Pandora, Spotify, Apple Music. The best place to find me is on my website, lo marie music dot com.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just like, that was great. I needed that today.
Ain't go wrong with Donny Hathaway, I mean.
Right. Um, so next, we're going to just talk a little bit about next steps. Now that we've told you about this, what do we do? And I just want to say, um, we really do want to, you know, start to ramp this up. And again, like I said before, we need all hands on deck if we're going to get these task force recommendations implemented. What that means for now is that, you know, we've had this core team that's been talking and getting these points together and organizing this event here. But we also need people in a steering committee and advisory committee who are able to actually put in a few hours to work on this. And you can be, you can be a fan, you can be a promoter, you can be a business owner, a venue owner. Doesn't matter from Madison, Dane County, doesn't matter. We just really need people to come on board with us. I did want to address, we had a strategy suggestion for equity in our chat. And that was for one of our local music festivals, who, talking about a booking policy, if you're an all-white male band, like you're not, that's, you're going to be put aside to see if we can find more diverse voices. And the, the commenter mentioned, you know, looking hard at venues, looking online or wherever. The only, there's, there's two issues here, and I don't know if this person is doing this or not, so no judgment whatsoever. This is a very great strategy to get started. But the first thing I would ask is, are there people of color on your planning team? If you don't have people of color in your planning team, it's very hard to actually implement these things long-term. The second thing is, is for example, artists that can't get on stages, hip-hop artists and other black and brown artists who just don't have opportunities, you're not going to find them by looking. So looking at the venue listings, looking online can make it really difficult. So part of that is expanding your network. So looking for, you know, talking to people, ask us that you can, ask Angel, ask Rob to make sure that you're getting into these networks that you otherwise wouldn't be connected with. I'm going to show you one more slide about how to get involved. And then I'll let, we'll have the rest of our group chime in. So here's, here are the next steps. First of all, we have a brief survey that we want you to take. I will, I will post the link in the chat. But all of this will also be available on ucanmadison.org. That's U-C-A-N-madison.org. The survey is basically just going to ask for your contact information and what you want to do. So even if all you want to do is stay on the mailing list, please fill out that survey. And we will keep you informed. We also want to know, maybe you like to fundraise, maybe you are really good at administrative tasks. Maybe you want to be on our steering committee or advisory committee. Just let us know that. And then the second is to read the task force report. This you can also find on the website. We also have a study that addressed music genre and violence that UCAN did in collaboration with CW Madison Sociology Department, the Department of Community and Environmental Sociology with Professor Randy Stoker. And we looked at eight years of police data from 2008 to 2016, looking at all music genres. And we coded the police data, calls for service, including charges, coded them by violent, non-violent, looked at a bunch of different music genres and also by venue. We could not see any difference at all whatsoever between violence and music genres. What seems to be the issue is alcohol and high density, as we know. So the highest police calls were in the State Street area and University Avenue area. So check that out as well. So just kind of get educated on the issue, because this isn't something that has been out there in the public eye. And then finally, we do need your financial support. So to get this done, it's going to require a lot of someone's time to, to really run the ball with this. And up until now, Urban Community Arts Network is currently a fully volunteer-run organization. So this has all been sort of in-kind staff support, getting it to this point. But to really get this move forward, we're going to have to get some people on board who can focus on the work only. But we do need your financial support. UCAN will be receiving the money on behalf of this collective, Madison Music City, what is what we're calling it right now. So on your screen, you can see paypal.me/ucanmadison. We're also on Cash App at UCAN Madison as well. And then finally, for the next steps, again, we want to talk to you. We want to talk to your groups, we want to talk to your organization. We want to talk to you and your friends and your, and your colleagues. And we want to figure out how you can be involved in the next steps for this project and how you can be involved in taking this to the next level. So if that's you, you can contact us at info@ucanmadison.org. You can also inbox any of us who are on this screen here, if you know us personally. And we want to start to set up these conversations with you so we can begin planning quickly. We want to move this pretty quickly over the next three months and get it up and running as fast as possible, because this is an issue, again, like I said, that has been sort of lingering on our to-do list as a city and as a county for a good couple, three decades, right? Probably longer than that. So Angel, Rob, anything else to say about next steps?
Um, I, I think for me, one of the biggest things that, that I just really want to get across is that I know some people are listening like, oh man, it's, it's only hip-hop genre, it's only this. But I think that the main thing that we want people to get is that when everybody pitches in, it makes it better for everybody. And to make sure that, 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 that even your support and making sure that, that voices of color and, and hip-hop and, and just making sure that, that these voices are heard, just playing, playing your part helps the bigger, the bigger process. So don't, I, I guess I would say, don't be discouraged if you're not from this specific genre. But, but making a point to, to, for the betterment of Madison music culture, that, that you take the time and really try to help out in whatever way you can. So that, that will be my, my parting shot.
Well, I, from my side, I think that I'm still learning on the go. So arts needs to be more involved, the city, in equity in music. So we haven't, I, we have to acknowledge that we haven't done a great job. But this is a moment of change. And Katrin Wolf, City Arts Administrator, and myself will make sure that we really have people of color in festivals and also at different venues. We want to see different genres and not be afraid of some sort of a stigma about different genres like hip-hop. We should educate people. I think that's one of our main tasks as well. How we can build awareness about the lack of diversity and why that is important, why that would make us a stronger and thriving city. So yeah, I think that's all. I'm just going to take on the role and, and try to, to do my best.
Thanks. Yeah, and just to point out, this is a complicated issue, like any issue where we're really trying to make systemic change. This isn't something that changes overnight. This isn't something that you can start a committee and fix in a year. This is a long-term process. So we want to get this plan together so we can really begin implementing over the next three to five years or so. So with that, I want to bring on our final performer, Josh Cohen. So bring him on the screen here. Alright, and let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Cohen. So, don't go anywhere just yet, again, but I do want to thank again our sponsors, Dane Arts, Madison Arts Commission, and also David Boyd, Walter Jankowski, Martha White, who helped with the task force again, and just, there's so many people, we can't name them all just yet, you know, in this one setting, but there's so many people that have been involved in getting this where it is today, and Josh, you are sideways.
I am, oh my lord!
I'm gonna read your bio while you fix that. Josh is a multi-award-winning six-string bassist, composer, session musician, and music educator. He's the first-place winner of the NAMM 2020 PJB Solo Bass Competition, 2018 Madison Magazine Honoree for Innovation in the Arts, 2015 No Trebles Number One Bass Video of the Year. He travels frequently, although probably less frequently these days, throughout North America to perform and teach clinics and workshops, including Bass Boot Camp 2016 and 2019, Groove Gears Clinic Series at Steve's Music Toronto, Bass Break Live 2017 and 2020, and the 2019 La Paca Bach Festival, Solo Bass Night 6 and 7, and many more. Josh's solo six-string electric bass performances, which can be heard on his debut album in 2014, Out of the Basement, and yes, it is B-A-S-S-M-E-N-T, of the basement, use extended techniques to create the sound of an entire band with only one instrument and without aid of loop pedals. When listeners hear Josh playing for the first time, they're often surprised to find out that everything they're hearing is being created by one person in real time. Thank you so much, Josh, for joining us, I can't wait to hear what you have.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you Angela, and thank you Rob D., hopefully my mic is working and you guys can hear me. I really enjoyed Super Friends' set, that was amazing, and also Low Marie and Donny Hathaway, too, again, especially Josh. Alright, so I'm releasing my new album on August 21st, it's called Freedom. It's another solo bass album and transcription book, so I'm gonna play a few pieces all original from that. So this one is titled Frostbite. Alright, thank you guys.
Oh!
Thank you. So that was Frostbite, his next piece is titled Bluesy Song, and was written for my wife, Alejandra, and, and was played at our, at our wedding back in 2018 in Mexico. Alright. I have time for one more, I'll play one more. That was Bluesy Song, okay, last one, and if you guys have a chance to donate to the link, to support the change that we're looking for in Madison. And, yeah, also thank you to Dane Arts and everyone who's working really hard to make this a really strong music community. Alright, this last tune is called "It's a Sin," and the sin is playing drums on the bass, and you'll see what I mean by that. Thank you guys, I'm Josh Cohen, go to www.musicofjoshcohen.com to learn more about what I'm doing, and my, my album Freedom and the Solo Bass Transcription Book is coming out August 21st.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys.
Oh, that was ugly!
I copied, I copied the link of your website to the chat, so people can see the reference. Yep.
Thank you so much, Josh, thank you to everyone for taking time out of your busy schedules with all this going on in the world today to talk about this issue. We will be in touch, I'm going to upload the video as soon as possible this afternoon to our Facebook page, as well as our YouTube page, so please look for that and share it with your friends and your colleagues, and we really look forward to hearing from you. So, yeah, let's do this.
Thank you so much, and feel free to email us or send comments, we are always happy to see new ideas.
I believe the children of the future. Teach them well and let them live, no, I'm kidding. Support, for real.
Alright, thanks everyone, we'll talk soon.
Bye-bye.